All right, good evening, everyone. I'll now call the meeting of the committee to hold to order at 5:00 P. M. As we're all back after a nice bit of a break in the summer here, we're back to fall weather here now. So, good to be back. Territorial acknowledgement, in the spirit of reconciliation, we acknowledge with respect the history and living culture of the Chinabek, the people of three quarters known as the Jibwe, Wudawu, and Otawatibee, a nation who have inhabited this land from time immemorial. We recognize that these lands are the territories of the Chippewas of Sogeen, Chippewas of Nawaish, collectively known as the Sogeen or Jibwe Nation, the keepers of this land. Georgian Bluffs is located on lands encompassed by Treaties forty-five and a half, sixty-seven, seventy-two, eighty-two, and ninety-three. We reflect on our role as treaty people and the need to live in respect and peace and show respect to the first peoples who inhabit these lands and waters. Adoption Agenda Recommendation reads, the agenda be approved as presented. Need to move over to second. Council winners, Council day, any discussion? I'll call the board halls in favor. Let's carry it. Declaration of security interests, does any member wish to declare a security interest? Not seeing any, they do it anytime, you declare at that time. Announcements, does any member wish to make an announcement? Mayor Carlson.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So, we need our basket back up here. Couple of weeks ago, the township hosted our very first Farm Crawl, and I'm thrilled to say it was a tremendous success. I managed to get to all seven places. So, seven local farms opened their gates and welcomed residents and visitors alike to explore, learn, and shop. Vendors reported between sixty to one hundred and fifty visitors each, and many sold out of product entirely. The feedback we've received has been overwhelmingly positive. We even got a thank you card from a resident who wanted to let us know they had a wonderful time, and that speaks volumes about the impact that this event had. As part of Farm Crawl, we introduced a passport program to encourage folks to visit multiple stops along the route. Visitors who got their passports stamped at each location were eligible to enter a prize draw for a Bluffs basket. These beautiful baskets are a new creation here in Georgian Bluffs, featuring a curated selection of products from six local vendors, along with some township sway. So far, we've sold fifty baskets across two batches, and we're preparing for a new round in mid to late November, featuring some special holiday themed items. It's been wonderful to see such strong support for our local businesses and producers, and the baskets have become a great way to showcase all the talent and quality we have right here in our community. So now, let's bring it all together with the moment many of you have been waiting for, who entered with passports, the draw. So, we had fifty completed passports submitted, and one lucky participant will be taking home a Bluffs basket. Mr. Nickle, you're the only one not on staff or council here, would you come do the draw?
My name isn't in there.
Is it? Thank you. Carol Schuldice. So, I'm assuming staff have a contact for her, because I only have a name, perfect. And thank you once again to all the participants, vendors, and visitors who helped make our first Farm Crawl such a success. We already look forward to next year. And thank you, Haley.
Thank you. Yeah, it wasn't actually a good day, I didn't get to all seven, I didn't get to five of them, and it was a nice day. Some interesting things to see in the townships. Good. Any other announcements for anyone? Not seeing anything. All right, public participation, presentations, six point one presentations, any person who wishes to make a presentation to council must register with the clerk, at least seven days in advance of the scheduled meeting. To register, you can complete the online delegation form, www georgianbluffs.ca/delegations, or you can call the clerk's office, five one nine, three seven six, two seven two nine, extension six oh one. Tonight, we do have one presentation, six point one point one. Bob Nickle, Indian acre trail maintenance, welcome, Bob. You have ten minutes.
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity to come here today and discuss with you and present some ideas that I have with respect to the property that I should explain is owned by a number of company of mine, and I actually do now reside in the house that's located on that property, I'm actually a tenant of this company. But aside from that, the reason I'm here today, when this property was purchased, I believe in two thousand and seventeen, I applied for construction of a storage building, which is located at the rear of the property. The property is located on the southeast corner of Gray County Road One and Indian acre Road. And so, I have some photos that I took. That one right there that you're looking at now, if you're looking out at the county road, this is basically, was basically taken from where the road ends. This is a dead end where there's a checkerboard, one of the photos will show that, but I'm taking that photo, looking, and you can see somewhat where there's, where the gravelled area stops, and there's a paved area. Now, my understanding is that paved area, up until that point, is maintained by the township, and it includes a driveway to the home that's located on the right hand side of this photo, that's owned by Dennis Schuler. And it's only from that point on, to where I took the photo from, that the maintenance is not part of the agreement for the, for the interest permits that were issued. There are two properties that are affected by this situation, perhaps if we could move to another photo. Okay, now you're looking, you can see the checkerboard sign. Now, I've turned myself one hundred and eighty degrees, and you're seeing from where the gravel starts to where it ends, and from that point, it's a road allowance, there's the old pump house for the water system that you can't see, that's just to the right of that, but that goes down the hill, and it's a, it's a road allowance, you see A T Vs and walkers and snowmobilers using it, but it's certainly down the hill, and it's not level, it's not gravelled, it's totally impassable. Okay, yes. Okay, now you're looking at it once again, from that direction, you can see my neighbor, the Phillips house on the left hand side, and their driveway, which is, I'm at that point where the gravel starts and the pavement ends where the non-maintenance agreement starts. So you can see where their, their house was built on the knoll, and is, you know, has their permit issues under the same basis as mine. That is my property, and you can see the, the storage building that was constructed, and it's on the opposite side of the, of the house that you just looked at, and you can see that's where that entrance permit was granted, and once again, it's on the gravel section, which is, is not maintained. There again, now you can see the pump house on the right, and you can see that, the Phillips house on the left a bit, and where it goes to the checkerboard. I, I know some of you have been out there and seen this before, for the past, that is looking directly where you can see the pavement ending just on the left hand side, and my understanding is that the township's original, that building has been there for a lot longer than the other two structures, and it is maintained by the township to that point somewhat, although the pavement sort of ends a bit before the driveway that is on the property of Dennis Schuler, whose garage and you can see his, his parking facility is located. And I think that's basically similar to, I don't know if that's a duplication of what we looked at before, but once again, it just shows where the pavement ends. So basically, the reality of this property and this situation is that, okay, from a maintenance standpoint, there's a need to maintain it to this point where the, where the Dennis Schuler's driveway ends, and in the winter time, the plow comes in there, and he plows, and he pushes the snow all the way towards the checkerboard anyway. Otherwise, he wouldn't, you know, he couldn't, he would block our driveways, and he would not be able to maintain the one for Dennis, for him to get in and out, who he has that entitlement. So what I'm requesting is, is that the restrictions for the maintenance be just simply beyond that paved portion of Dennis's driveway, basically to the checkerboard, which is at the point where the road allowance drops off, and that's where the snow is pushed to. I should also mention that in that timeframe that I've owned this property, it, on a couple of occasions, the township has gone in with some gravel and done some work on it, actually just recently, I'm not sure what prompted that, whether it was my inquiry or not, but they, I noticed one day that the township trucks and vehicles showed up and did, because what inevitably happens over the years is rain and certain amount of erosion and so on, and the, especially towards my neighbors, the Phillips, because it's further back, it starts to get pretty ruddy and pretty, pretty rough conditions for them to get in and out. And so that's happened a couple of times since two thousand and seventeen, since I've owned the property. But beyond that, and I guess that's my point, I don't honestly understand what any effective ramifications it would be if simply these restrictions were removed, so that the road would just simply be maintained, and, and it's cleared in the winter as it's been all along, all those years, so that it's passable. Beyond that, I'm not certain why it would really have any effect.
All right, thanks, Bob. Yeah, that's a great presentation there, and like, most of us are well aware of that street and the road and the shape it's in, so. Is, are we allowed to ask, ask any questions or clarification questions, if we're all aware of this ceremony? Yep, ask for me.
I, I know we're not too engaged in a debate, so I'm not going there, but we often have these presentations, and then they go off, and things are left hanging, so is this something that we should get a report back? From staff?
I notice motion would come forward if them would be.
Yeah. At the end of the meeting or at the end of this presentation?
No one has any questions of me? Very straightforward. Yeah, I think also, Jody mentioned that the Phillips did also send in a note confirming their support for this, not that there'd be any reason that they wouldn't support it, but that's, I believe, on record too.
Yes, go for it.
So I'm happy to move that staff bring back a report, and that is so that we have a more fulsome understanding, and we understand precedence in what's, we just want to make sure things are done consistently in our community, so I'm happy to make that motion.
Yep. In the second, Council day. Any discussion on that? We can call the board on that then. What was the favor?
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay.
All right, delegation of agenda items. Now, any person who wishes to appear before council regarding an item on the agenda must register with the clerk's office. To register, you can complete the online delegation form, www georgianbluffs.ca/delegations, or call the clerk's office at five one nine, three seven six, two seven two nine, extension six oh one, or you can register in council chambers with the clerk prior to the meeting starting at five P. M. Public inquiries, any person who wishes to appear before council with a question or inquiry must register with the clerk's office. To register, you can complete the online, online delegation form, www georgianbluffs.ca/delegations, call the clerk's office, or call clerk's office at five one nine, three seven six, two seven two nine, extension six oh one, or register in council chambers with the clerk prior to the meeting, starting at five P. M. On the recommendation reports, the first one is the development infrastructure, seven point one point one, D E V twenty twenty-five dash zero four nine, M C E A, side road three, structure D zero 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 seven, conclusion. The recommendation reads that council receives staff report D E V twenty twenty-five zero four nine municipal class environmental assessment, M C E A, structure D zero zero seven, conclusion, and consider the following recommendation, that council adopt alternative for permanently closing and removing structure D zero zero seven. I'll get a move over a second, put on the floor, on the floor, Council Covert, Council winners, and I'm turning this over to Kevin now for discussion.
Yes, and thank you, and good evening, and welcome back from the summer break. I proudly present to you staff report D F twenty twenty-five forty-nine, conclusion of the municipal class environmental assessment for structure D zero zero seven or side road three bridge. Just a brief history on the, on previous reports and on the bridge. If council recalls in two thousand and nineteen, this bridge was shut down due to severe, severe erosion of the abutments, and the bridge deck were prompted engineers to close the bridge almost immediately. Since two thousand and nineteen, there has been discussions as to what is the best course of action for the bridge itself. In two thousand and twenty-three, staff presented a budget, a budget recommendation to proceed with the municipal class environmental assessment, and staff procured through a competitive RFP, or request for proposal for consulting services to guide the township staff and help conclude through the environmental assessment reports, heritage assessments, and background historical uses of the bridge itself. Since then, in March, staff brought for, March of two thousand and twenty-five, staff brought for preliminary alternatives as to the bridges, sorry, preliminary alternatives for the bridge rehabilitation cell. If you recall, there is five alternatives, one do nothing, two replace with precast concrete box culvert, replace with a twin art culvert or steel corrugated steel pipe, and four permanently close and remove, or five, replace with a pre fabricated Algonquin bridge, basically one of your box bridges. Since then, council requested more information and to go into public engagement for more information and to solicit public feedback for options of the bridge. Looking back at the previous analysts and updated cost estimates as per Pearson Engineering, the first alternative again is to do nook. We leave the bridge in place, it doesn't cost us anything, however, the bridge is going to further deteriorate, which ultimately will leave high liability on the township, and ultimately will lead to the removal of the bridge. Second, you can replace with precast concrete box culvert for a single lane. That estimate has been updated to approximate cost of eight hundred thousand, six hundred and sixty-six thousand. This is a high cost, however, this will give you the longest lifespan of your infrastructure. Third option would be to replace with a twin corrugated steel pipe CSP art culvert. This is one of your third highest costs, six hundred and twenty-five thousand, and it'll roughly give you a life cycle of about twenty-five to fifty years. The twin corrugated steel pipe is required to meet the hydrology and hydraulics of K D Creek. The fourth option presented was permanent closure and removal of the structure itself. The, the updated estimate was approximately two hundred thousand dollars to complete this option. This is your less suspenseful option, and it could be implemented in relatively short timeline. Your third, or sorry, your fifth option was your pre fabricated bridge. The pre fabricated Algonquin bridge was one of your highest options, at nine hundred and sixty-three thousand. Again, these are updated costs reflective of current request for tenders that Pearson has saw within two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-four. The reason why the pre fabricated bridge itself is so expensive is when the abutments are built, so essentially, the abutments have to be removed and replaced. In order to install new abutments, it's permitting, it's forming, it's pouring of concrete, and ultimately placing that pre fabricated bridge on those abutments, with the engineering involved in that as well. During the March report brought forth to council with these, with these preliminary alternatives, council requested staff to proceed with the public engagement. So since then, staff proceeded with mail in go public engagement surveys to residents and stakeholders within a one kilometer radius to solicit their feedbacks. The survey was available from May twenty-sixth in two thousand and twenty-five to June twenty-eighth in two thousand and twenty-five. The survey, the survey is attached to the report and had multiple questions involved, such as if there were residents of the township of Georgian Bluffs, our neighboring municipalities, if they used the bridge historically, does the bridge have any social, heritage, economic significance to themselves, what options would they see favorable moving forward, and what is their preferred method of transportation? So some of the highlights of the results is that it had strong community support for real estate in the Croxton. It had eighty-one respondents favoring replacement over removal. Recreational use, particularly the snowmobiling N A T B community engaged in the survey, and seventy-eight of those respondents indicated seasonal or recreational use. The local stakeholders, the farmers within the area, also emphasized the importance of replacing the bridge. One thing, obviously, to move their cash crops and access to their crops, instead of diverting around the Gray Bruce town line. So among the replacement options, the highest percentage of value was fifty-one percent in favor of the round are the twin corrugated steel pipe, followed by the concrete box square, and third, the steel fabricated, sorry, the steel fabricated bridge. There were a small percentage of individuals who opposed the replacement citing environmental concerns, and the recreational use, I believe there was a few comments cited around ATV, dust, noise, and the, I can sort of the environmental impacts as that. So, given the fact that staff have carefully reviewed the engineering options, the cost implications, the community feedback gathered through the side road three bridge survey, from the technical and financial standpoint, the permanent closure and removal remains the most cost effective, and this is a sustainable option. Given the bridge's lowest traffic classification, limited use by the adjacent properties, the significant costs associated with the other replacements. With that being said, the survey does demonstrate a very strong support for replacements. And weighing these factors, council must consider the trade off between the long term financial liability of the replacement and the community preference for regular access. While the closure would remove the minimal township cost and liability, the comments from the survey are pretty strong for replacement. Staff do recommend that council provide direction on whether to proceed with removal or as the fiscally responsible option to further evaluate the term that is presented. So again, as a recommendation, it is staff's recommendation to remove and to close, then remove the bridge, however, the second recommendation would be to replace with the twin corrugated steel pipe.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Good report, lots of information. I'll open up to council for comments, questions. Let's go first. Winners?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Pringle. To you, Kevin. I mean, I've always said that once a bridge is there, bridges are always to be there, I don't favor closing bridges. One of the things in your report, and I'm a numbers guy, and I pay attention to things, but in March twelfth, when Pearson did their presentation, they indicated the average life expectancy of twin CSP culverts between forty and sixty years. Your report says twenty-five to fifty. There's quite a substantial difference there between what we're talking about. And it often feel like when we talk about CSP pipes, that we actually go on the lower end of what their life expectancy is, is to make them look like they're a negative option. I don't believe they are a negative option, but when I look at the lifespan of those two, when you start talking fifty year life span, life expectancy for that cost, that's not a big cost. We talked twenty-five to forty years, of course, the cost goes up, but I mean, when I look at what's presented in March, and look what's presented today, there's a difference, and I don't know why that difference follows through.
Take your thought, any comments? Anyone else?
I'm, yeah, I'm one hundred percent not in favor of closing the road. I do believe that bridge is there for a reason, it was a reason there fifty or a hundred years ago. There's more traffic today, there's more people using the Gray Bruce line, Gray Road Five, there's bigger equipment, more traffic, we needed, but we have an option to move a lot of equipment away from the big roads and get them off on the back road and be safer for them and for the oncoming traffic to stop. I, I, I'm in favor of option three B, I guess it is, is one I'd be looking at, but I just, I struggle, I do struggle with the number that comes in at six hundred and twenty-five thousand for two culverts, when I know a township just south of here put a ridge in for three hundred and thirty thousand. So I get, I get a little, I get confused in where the money comes from, where the difference is, but I'm one hundred percent opposed to closing that road, I think that bridge needs to be replaced, and I think we need to do, need to do everything we can for the agriculture community, the recreational community down on that corner of our township. That's my sense.
So Deputy Mayor Pringle, you talked about the high usage or the potential high usage, and yet the report talks about the low to very low usage. Is that because of the current state of the bridge, or were they, was, were the engineers looking at the usage prior to it being closed, or is it a theoretical number?
To you, Mayor, to Council, Covert. The information that we have in terms of the traffic usage comes from our two thousand and twenty-three report, when we completed our traffic. Prior to that, the township has no, no traffic data on that bridge. Since it was closed in two thousand and nineteen, it is a local road, local access road, if you will. It is assumed that is very low impact, low traveled to local residents in that area.
Thank you. I, I struggle, I understand your rationale, Chair Pringle, at the same time, I have to look at expenditures on behalf of the entire municipality, and that's where I find this to be challenging and difficult. And then there's the environmental impacts as well of doing that kind of work. I struggle with the six hundred and twenty-five thousand, is that what we're looking at as an estimate? Because you mentioned three B, and I don't see a three B. So, maybe I could be, this would be more palatable to me if I wasn't looking at six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for a road that has relatively very low usage.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. If I remember from that two thousand and twenty-three report, when it identified the current usage of the road, it also mentioned that that was based on the bridge being closed. So it was obvious that people couldn't go through, so the numbers were skewed on the downside, that if the report had been done when the bridge was still open, it likely showed a lot more usage. So I think with, and I agree, I don't like the idea of taking a bridge out totally, I also question that six hundred and twenty-five thousand, but I think there's a higher usage on that bridge when it's open than what that report showed.
Good comment, Sarah, Council day.
I have a question about option three. With one of our past bridges that we spoke about, there was, there seemed to be a lot of direct communication with the farmer who used that bridge in terms of the load capacity for the bridge and the ideal width of the bridge for the changing nature of farm equipment. So I'm curious if similar work has happened with the farmers who have previously relied on this bridge, if the, if the, if option three meets their current and modern agricultural practices. I did note that I did note that one person who talked about using the bridge to use farm equipment to their property, they prefer for the bridge not to be replaced. So it just, if there is more specific current information about what the farmers who previously relied on the bridge would like, that would be of interest to me.
Good question, Gavin.
Um, through you, the chair. My understanding is that if option three, replacement between corrugated steel pipe, um, it should allow that, the topographics and the geographics of the road itself should allow enough cover for those culverts that there wouldn't be a load restriction. Um, is my understanding. I'm not quite sure what the previous load restriction on that bridge was prior to its closing. But if it was elected to go with option three, the corrugated steel pipes, my understanding, there may not be a load restriction. However, I can certainly confirm that through Pearson's follow up.
Um, thank, I can, thank you. I think that would be important information to have before making a decision. Uh, if, if one of our reasons for replacing a bridge is to support the agriculture community.
No good comments. Let's go over.
I concur with Councilor Day on that point. I'm also more convinced of the need for the bridge for agriculture than I would be for snowmobiling when we, my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, is that a lot of people aren't engaging in snowmobiling anymore because of our unpredictable winters. And I, Councilor Day asked at one of our previous discussions how many snowmobilers we're talking about, and we never really did get an answer. So by comparison, we don't offer soccer fields and baseball diamonds if there aren't enough people who are participating in those recreational activities. So while I'm, I'm more likely to support it from the agricultural perspective, I still don't feel like I have enough information as to really what is the impact on recreational use um on that bridge.
Good question, Councilor Day.
Um, my other big thought around this, uh, if I'm remembering the report correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong. There are, I think in the survey, it talked about ten more bridges in the near future that we'll need to consider. So I find, I have been thinking about how I find it hard to make these decisions one by one without knowing the importance of the next bridges that will come to our attention or to next term's council's attention. Um, if this bridge is somewhat important to the agriculture community, but the next bridge is really important to the agriculture community, then I just, from the long term perspective of financial management, I, I wonder if more, I wonder, I just, I, I don't have a concrete answer here, but I do wonder about the value of looking at this from a broader perspective than just one bridge at a time. And I am aware that that would make more work for staff and maybe change this making on council, but I would be curious to hear other perspectives on that possible way of approaching bridges over the next, I, over the next few years, not just over the next month or two.
Good comments.
Sam, turn it.
Yes, sir.
So through your chair, that is part of like your ten year capital plan that staff are creating. Right now, we, I believe it was back in June, we had started our proposed levels of service workshop, strategic session with council. We do need that to finish because those proposed levels of service dictate what you can accommodate within your ten year capital plan. So once that session is finished, we have the direction from council and the proposed levels of service and we're full some ten year capital plan. Not only for ridge, bridges, but all of your assets will be coming back.
Thanks, Sam. Wait, Councilor, no, I was just gonna say, when, sorry, I might have missed it, I might have said it. When is that gonna be coming back? Approximately?
I have not heard a date. I don't know if they've been canvassed to council on dates or not.
Yeah, I was just gonna say that response is very helpful and I concur again with Councilor Day in that I think we need to look at the bigger picture and, and not be making these decisions one by one as they come along. So if there's any way we can hold off on this a little bit longer to see the full picture and make a comprehensive plan, that would be my preference.
Any further comments or a motion to, um, make an amendment to the motion?
Sorry, if, if I may, uh, I would just like to refer council to attachment one, the structural D zero zero seven conclusion report. And if you refer to table one, design alternative solution evaluations, uh, it takes into perspective the natural, social, cultural, transportation requirements of the bridge itself, the economic, technical, and it ranks it on a scale, on, on a numbering system. Um, so under social environment, it does speak to the restatement. If you were to proceed with option three, which is the duck twin corrugated steel pipe, um, it restates the traffic flow roadway with a wide single lane structure. Uh, the, re, next, the trail systems, snowmobile, heavy, and also um improves the load capacity. Although it doesn't give a specific number for the low capacity, it certainly improves that low capacity itself for heavy farm equipments.
Just for that, Gavin. Yeah, and I think as far as the snowmobile piece of it goes there, like, it's hard to say, you know, every year is gonna change on snowmobiles and ATVs and stuff. But they used to use that as part of the snowmobile trail at one time with no winter bandits on it, used to use that throughway to get over to concession eleven to get the hype on the trail. Now I believe they're having to go up to the corner of Gray Blue Five and come around out there or something. So we're having to run the road straight as opposed to being able to use that road. Again, usage hard at home, it's getting different every year. Like it's a lot of snowmobiles. Just like, no. Again.
Chums.
Yeah, still.
Oh, uh, feel free, free to finish your thoughts.
No, I, yeah, just for example.
Um, I was wondering if future reports would be able to break down snowmobiling and ATVing to see if there's a difference between who's, how many people are participating in which activity. Um, just because of that climate change aspect where winter is becoming less predictable and maybe perhaps ATVing is replacing snowmobiling. Also, are the trail networks, is the same, uh, it, it must, especially for snowmobiling. I don't think it would be too hard to see how many of our bridges are essential components of the snowmobile trail. So we'd have a picture of how expensive it would be to maintain all of those bridges for snowmobiling, just to have that broad picture. Uh, I suspect it's more than this one that will need repair to maintain the snowmobile network.
True. All right. Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for you. It sounds like at this point it might be beneficial to have a defer, a motion to defer. Um, that would read something like that consideration of report DEV twenty twenty five dash zero four nine. Need defer depending an additional staff report that addresses, one, the impact on recreational use, i.e. snowmobiling and ATV. Two, weight restrictions for option three, and three, sorry, two, three, broader information on the condition of bridges across the township.
That's good. A mover and a secondary for what? For numbers, Councilor.
I'm just wondering if we need to refer specifically to um, like, the timing in terms of the planning that Samantha referenced as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair, we could absolutely provide more specifics around the timing. Um, but based on this conversation, I would assume that the report will be coming back following those conversations and not prior to.
Good, thank you. So Curtis gave us a recommendation there. You need a mover and a secondary to put on the floor. Councilor Coburn, Councilor Day, any discussion? We'll call it on the amendment, minute motion vote. You, you voting there, Isaac?
I thought we were voting, sorry. No, very good.
Thanks, Isaac.
Sorry.
I'm gonna call the vote then, all in bear. That is fair. And may I make, do we have to go back to the main motion? No? Good, good. All right. Thanks, Gavin. One down, sort of. Uh, seven point one point two is DEV twenty twenty five zero six six Old Beach Drive Public Engagement and Survey Results. Recommendation reads that council receives staff report DEV twenty twenty five dash zero six six Old Beach Drive Public Engagement and Survey Results for information. Need a mover and a secondary. Councilor Day. Councilor Coburn, yep, back to you.
Thank you. And uh, through you, the chair, I'll be pretty quick about this one again. This is just an information report, just to follow up as to where staff is with the old beach uh reconstruction options. So as council may recall, in twenty twenty one, Old Beach was significantly impacted by a large rain event, wind event, where it brought in high water level, high water levels that overtopped the road itself, which ultimately impacted the road, uh, popping a lot of cross culverts itself and further deteriorated road. Which brought on greater discussions as to an overall impact as to what the future of Old Beach Road would look like. Um, also brought on further discussions about potentially bringing a water main servicing to the residence along Old Beach Drive. Um, as part of the Eastland Water Main Looping, um, future expansion. Um, on that, staff have heard from residents about their concerns with the further deterioration of Old Beach Drive, uh, storm water management concerns, and particularly the pedestrian safety and speeding concerns. Um, staff did complete a survey to the residents, um, which is attached. And the survey aimed to better understand the proposed design considerations and to narrow down the scope of work for staff to create a request for proposal for consulting services in the future. Um, participants were asked to provide feedback, feedback on potential options for water management and active transportation as well as alternative solutions or considerations that could enhance the overall community health and well being. Um, the survey also included a space for open ended responses, giving residents the opportunity to share any additional observations. The survey was open and mailed to residents um on June twenty sixth in twenty twenty five, and it closed in July fifteenth of twenty twenty five. Uh, the survey is attached for your reference, and the survey results are attached to attachment three. A large majority, just a high level summary of the survey results is that a large majority of the respondents live on Old Beach Drive, are uh, are surrounding area. Uh, they do note that the continuously deteriorating state of Old Beach Drive is becoming a concern. And half their response rated the road's condition as poor, inferior, poor. Um, several residents highlighted the hazards for pedestrians and cyclists. Um, as you may be aware, it is a very narrow road with open ditches on the west side and the bay on the east side. Uh, flooding has been a concern for the area, especially on Wash, Washington Street. And when asked about the possible upgrades, respondents ranked stormwater infrastructure and road reconstruction as the top priorities. Municipal water access, pedestrian cyclist safety, fire protection ranked on the lower scale as an average. Um, a lot of views however were divided on the expansion of uh access to municipal water source. Uh, mainly being that they need more information about the potential costs involved. Um, there is an option that staff can include as a contingency within the request for proposal for the consultant to reach um residents further and provide a high level budget estimate as to what this may cost to the residents if it is elected to proceed with the, with the improvement. As per the priority lane status or the local infotra charges. Um, several residents opposed to the road widening, i.e. a more typical urban cross section as you would see in an urbanized area. Meaning curves, gutters, uh, two lane, typical road width, the four meters wide or eight meter total width. And a dedicated active transportation trail, i.e. bike path and a sidewalk. A lot of residents were opposed to that consideration as they thought that would take away the, the characteristics of Old Beach Drive in the cottage field. So just in summary, residents probably agree that the needs to address the drainage, road surface quality and safety. Uh, there is a differences in, in divergence on the scope of improvement, particularly with respect to the active transportation facilities in the municipal installation. Uh, again, this is just for information right now. Uh, staff will, the next step, the next step, staff will take these comments um and narrow down the scope of work. And then finalize a request for proposal. Uh, we'll go to a competitive procurement process to engage a consultant to help guide staff and the township and residents to finalize a detailed design and get us into the next phases of construction. Uh, with that in mind, storm water management um is the main, the main um aspect that we'll be dealing with, along with the cyclists and pedestrian safety. We will look into more in depth with the um, speed impacts and perhaps a traffic calming measures as well within the request for proposal. But this will be a narrowed scope, as council may recall, brought forward to them early in twenty twenty five for a single source with uh G E I consultants. So staff are confident with the narrow scope and a competitive procurement, the costs certainly will come down for consulting services and construction impacts as well.
All right. Thanks for our work, Gavin. Questions, comments to council? For information, no questions, no comments? Okay, we'll call the vote and all in bear. That's fair. Thank you. Thanks, Gavin. All right, seven point two is corporate services, seven point two point one, C O R twenty twenty five dash zero three five. Payment condition assessment with AI road patrol. Recommendation reads, the staff be directed to enter into an agreement with Surikey and partners for a five year term for automated road conditioning evaluation solution to provide an annual payment and road condition assessment along with AI argumented road patrolling to improve recording, test road, assess repairs and future asset management planning. Done, Chris, here. I need a mover and a secondary. Mayor Carlton. Councilors. And we are looking at Brian for this one.
Hello.
Who's Brian?
Um, so currently we operate with um, uh, a program called Street Logic. Um, they come every three year scanner rooms, and we got a somewhat of our decisions on that snapshot in time. Um, so the road from intersection to intersection is assigned a condition rating based on what they see at the time. It deteriorates based on um, a set formula, depends on if it's Nashville Road, if it's Atar and Chip Road, um, those types of things. So when we try to um project out our ten year capital plan for what roads we need to do, um, we're basing that information on, on that snapshot in time. Um, what this um solution would provide would be um an annual um PCI of all of the roads. So we would get that snapshot every year um so that we can see if roads are deteriorating um as expected or if we've got different problems, such as is there a problem with the base of the road that's leading to early fatigue cracking? Um, how much of the road's cracking? Um, is our preventative program the uh, excuse me, the best that we could have? Um, should we, you know, crack sealing our roads when um, after we do a Nashville Road in three years, how much of that crack sealing needs to take place? Um, currently we, for potholes, we would stop at um, potholes and the patroler has to manually input that information where the pothole is so that the, the queue will go and do it. input that information, where the pothole is, so that the crew will go out and do it. Do they realistically do every pothole? It would be very time-consuming to do every pothole on some of the roads that are in poorer condition. So, while they would catch the bigger ones, the crew would go out and just simply patch the remainder of potholes without a work order for it. This would certainly give us an understanding of how much time is actually being put into the number of potholes that are taking place on a road. With the two-year road front-facing camera footage, we would be able to see how those roads are deteriorating over time, and they will also, where the current solution is intersection to intersection, this will get it down to a five to 10-meter section by section. So, if there is one part of the road that is really starting to deteriorate, we are planning on a full road replacement when perhaps we only need to do a kilometer or a couple hundred meters in order to bring that condition back up. I don't think there's much more I can add to that.
Sure, thanks, Ryan. Well, it's a good report, it's a lot of information in there. So, all right, I'll turn it over to council, questions, comments? First, yeah, councilors?
Thank you, through you, Deputy Mayor, bring it to Brian. Great report. I support it, but I got a couple of questions that I really need answered. Not that long ago, when I asked about condition, pavement condition index reports and why council hasn't seen that, the one of the response was, well, we didn't really get what we thought we were paying for. So, that resonates in the back of my mind. So, I totally support if we get what we think we're paying for and we totally agree to it, great. Is this monitored, managed, administered through the capital management program division in Georgia Bluster, is this actually done through operations? Who's got control of this? Who's going to understand for year to year that the consistency in what we're doing? If we're just going to buy a program every year, gives us data, and it goes into a shelf, and next year somebody else evaluates the data? That's my concern with this. You just did a great presentation, and hopefully you work another 100 years, Brian, and you're benefiting from Georgia Bluster. But that's my concern with this, there's a lot of information coming into this, and it'll do what you say it's going to do. But if staff turnover, all of a sudden I start to see, wait a minute, we're relying on this thing to find potholes. We're not doing what, we're losing the boots on the ground, and there's enough people involved. That's what I see this, I really do, that's my total opinion. If it does what you think it's going to do, and somebody's going to guarantee me that staff are going to take it seriously and invest in three years, and what we invest in is what we're going to get our bang for our buck, I support it. If it's going to, somebody's going to attribute this going, hey, once you're worrying about looking for a pothole, we'll fix it when we get the report, I don't support it.
So, it would be spread out between both the operations department and the finance department in the asset management program, as well as with the engineering. So, the potholes would be taken, scanning would take place as part of every M M S patrol. So, if for our fast-forward roads, if we're out there driving every two weeks, it's going to pick up any new pothole that it detects in that two-week period, and it's going to generate a new work order for it. So, that would be on, that would be on the operations side, but we're going to collect that information and through the A P I automated processing interface, programming interface, it's going to all go into our capital asset program so that we can see when it comes up time to review a road, and if we have a few roads that have the same P C I, we can say, oh, well, we've repaired 100 potholes on Route A, but we've only done 10 potholes on Route B, so why is Road A worse? Is, do we have a better, sorry, lower space? And then similar for the overall P C I, that's going to stay with in the asset management and in conjunction with engineering would decide on which roads would be recommended. So, one of the value-added services that had come with Street Logic was that it would help us plan that out in our asset management program that we incorporate all of our assets, it will also do that for us. So, it will go through and it'll say, all right, if we are wanting to use slurry seal after three years, it will come up with a budget for which roads are in prime condition for it based on their P C I. Staff would still have to review them, but instead of having to drive, we would be able to, can be double-checked in the office through the camera footage. Obviously, that isn't as good as being able to go out there and look at every little thing, but there would be justification for it. And with the, that would apply for all of them. And this would also start to do our gravel roads. Council had, through the budget, recommended that we enhance our service so that we complete a regraveling every three years, but we don't have anything to document why we are regraveling that road. Is it just because it's its turn, or do we have other problems starting to develop that are coming through? And in documenting that, we would be able to start to justify, maybe this road needed two inches of gravel this year, but it needs another couple inches of gravel next year because it didn't hold the way that we thought, or there was more of a washout or a depression.
Good answer, Ryan. It's a lot of utility to answer to there. It's nice to, it's nice to hear that the work can be done from here without having to send people out to actually do it, look see. So, if we can be more efficient that way and do that and not be running around looking for a pothole, that's more efficient, I think. Good comment. Any other comments? Okay, not seeing any, we call the vote, all is fair. That was carried. Thank you, thanks, Brian. All right, 7.2.2 C O R 2025-036, council and committee of the whole structure review. Recommendation reads that the report, C O R 2025-036, be received for information with respect to the occurrence and meeting structure review of council and the committee of the whole meetings, and that staff be directed to take on necessary administrative actions to incorporate committee of the whole into council meeting agendas commencing January 2026. Need to move her in a second there. Number four. That was Corbin.
Isaac.
That was Sholdeis. All right, fourteen.
I'm here, are you? So, periodically, staff will conduct reviews of the procedure by law just to monitor and make recommendations on the approval of meeting efficiency and just to ensure that we're effectively using our resources as a township. We have identified some inefficiencies in our current alternating structure of council and committee of the whole. Some of these inefficiencies include delays in ratifying our decisions and increased need for special council meetings, such as the scenario that we're in tonight, rolling into a special council meeting immediately following this one. And then we also see a bit of rushed agenda preparation from Jody and I, having to finalize the agenda the same night as the meeting to prepare for the next council meeting and things like that. And then we also do have some inconsistent meeting lengths that inform a little bit of this recommendation with remuneration rates and being compensated for that half-day minimum for hour rate. So, we've conducted this review, and we're recommending that we change the structure and the frequency of council and committee of the whole meetings. This would improve our efficiency and reduce our costs slightly. So, when we reviewed the structure, we looked at 11 municipalities. These are the same comparators that were used by the council remuneration committee in compiling some of their initial data. So, of the municipalities that they used and were using the same comparators just to ensure consistency so that when council considers their findings on a later date, they're both informed by the same comparator listing. And that comparator listing was also informed by the comparator listing that you approved for your non-union pay equity review. So, of those comparators, 50% of them do use a combined committee of the whole and council structure, as I'm recommending. Most have two meetings per month. Only two municipalities of those comparators hold committee of the whole meetings separately in the same fashion that we do. And at times, this township can hold three to four meetings per month, so that is above the average from those comparators. The proposed structure also just a more closely aligns with those comparing municipalities. It increases our decision-making efficiency, reduces costs, and also supports some of the strategic goals that council adopted in their most recent strategic plan. So, as a result of the review, we're recommending that council and committee of the whole meetings be combined into a single meeting structure and that the existing ratification process for those committee of the whole decisions still remain. So, they would be ratified at the following meeting in the same fashion that we have now. So, there would be no jumping of the fence, if you will. It will still follow the same good governance practice of having two opportunities to consider a matter. So, with this recommendation, we are suggesting that they be held twice a month, so that will be the first and the third Wednesday of the month. And just so this council has the benefit of those, the new meeting structure, we would suggest that it start in January of 2026. I am more than happy to take any questions.
Thanks, Corbin. Questions, Councilor?
No questions, but just a comment or two. I am thrilled that we can have fewer meetings and hopefully accomplish the same amount at a reduced cost to our rate pairs. My only regret is that we didn't do this earlier, but thank you for bringing it forward at this point in time. My one concern you've addressed, and that was that we have the opportunity for this overstep in thought in considering committee of the whole and that coming back to the following meetings, so I'm glad that that's the plan. Thank you.
Good comments. Councilor Sholdeis?
Yeah, thanks. I'm fully in support of this, Carly. I think that's a great idea. Anything to increase efficiencies and decrease cost to the municipality, I'm all for. I guess my question to you is, how would you structure the timing in this? Would you still start these meetings at 5:00 P M. on those Wednesdays, or would you make it a bit earlier, or what are your thoughts there?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you, to Councilor Sholdeis. The recommendation as it stands now is to keep the meetings at the same time, just recognizing that 70% of the current council does work full-time, and the time seems to be, seems to be working. So, we do maybe anticipate that the meetings would be a little bit longer, but it's kind of a give-and-take situation whereby you get a Wednesday back, but you might have, you know, two longer Wednesday things. So, is the same volume of business just spread out a little bit differently?
Good comments, Councilor Day.
Thank you. That's, the meetings might go on a bit longer, but I'm okay with that. I think that's a great idea. I'm fully in support of it. Thanks.
Yep, Councilor Day.
I am in support. I do have concern regarding the length of meetings and the length of, and how, and the length of the agenda in terms of preparing for the meetings. Would the agendas be available to us earlier, given the more, the longer timeframe between meetings?
No.
Sorry, through you, Mayor, to staff. I forgot how to do this apparently.
Thank you for the question, Councilor Day. So, with the cadence occurring a little bit differently and without that rush for agendas, we could absolutely release them sooner, which is a benefit. We are hoping to get to the full seven-day agenda cycle, so you would have the agenda for a full seven days as opposed to the four to five that you get now. So, we would, we would increase the amount of time that you have to review agendas.
May I ask a follow-up question? Through you, to Carly, to our, um, with the length of the meetings, since multiple people in this room also need to get up and get to another job in the morning, would there be, I'm sure, I imagine the answer would be yes, there will be consideration given to how much is packed into one agenda meeting so that, we already have had some meeting, a meeting that memorably went until after nine and closer to 10. So, just, I do have that immediate concern that meetings would be quite long and affect the next day of work as well.
Through you, Mr. Chair. One of the benefits of moving to the structure is actually the opportunity that's afforded to us for more balanced agendas. So, although discussion may, it's really hard to gauge how much discussion would be had on a particular item, but this allows us more flexibility to actually plan agendas and balance items that we think are going to generate a lot of discussion, and allows us to kind of predict which items might be suited for certain agendas and just balancing, you know, the amount of time that we might anticipate council would want to discuss certain items. So, although it's identified as a potential concern, we hope to mitigate it with effective agenda planning.
Yep. Councilor.
Just going back to Counselor Sholdeis's comments about start times, I, obviously, the five o'clock works for this council, but just, you know, that's a council decision depending on what the needs of council are, and a couple of us are lucky enough to be a little free on with our time, so naturally we want to walk around folks who look full days. So, just that comment, it could change next term of council depending on the makeup of the council. Looking at the chart on page four, I was a little confused as to why we went from what we did into things like committee commitments. I think we were fine just with the first part of the report without the other data, which in a way kind of preempts the work of our, our community members on our council remuneration committee, and I don't want them to feel preempted in any way. But just as a finer point, perhaps, the chart on that page is not inclusive of all of the committees. There are a couple missing, mainly committee of adjustment and the committee of veterinary services that I believe Counselor Sholdeis, I could be wrong about that. So, there were some omissions in that chart. I didn't think the chart needed to be there in the first place, but if it's going to be there, it ought to likely include all of those committees. Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions? Your comments?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Not a question, just a comment. I'm, this really aligns with what the county went to a number of years ago, combining council and committee of the whole on the same day, and I'm glad to see this coming forward and not on the Wednesday night before county council meeting on the opposite week. So, I'm totally in favor of this. Thank you.
Very good. No comments? All right, no further comments. I'm going to call the vote, all those in favor. That was carried. Yeah, we tried to tell them to move over there. All right, updates from the member appointed to county council committees and local boards? Are there any updates from members appointed to county council or committees of the boards? County council, if I want, Mayor Carlton?
So, probably a little lengthier one. So, since our last council meeting in July, I have attended both outdoor movie nights, which were one at Cabo Beach and the second at Bonmy Beach, and both were well-attended. I'd like to thank our summer students and all of our staff who participated in putting those events together. I heard a lot of positive comments back from people who attended. In particular, one woman I spoke to at Cabo Beach had grown up in the area and then moved away, so had kind of lost her contact with people. She's now living at Francis Lake with her family and found that the movie nights were a great way for her to reconnect with people in the area, so a great community-building exercise, I think. Another couple at Cabo Beach had retired here from the Ottawa area, so didn't know a lot of people in the area yet and had never seen so many children at Cabo Beach, and they thought that it was great. They also hadn't been aware about Market Motors coming up, so they also attended that on the Monday night, and I got to see them and talk to them there. So, I neglected to thank Simon at Cabo Beach for his role in helping to make that happen, so I'd like to send thanks out to him at this point. It was a great location. He turned a blind eye to all the children playing football out in the driving range. Apparently, they shouldn't have been out there, but they were, and they were having a blast, and the cool breeze out there that evening kept the bugs away, so that was really good. And surprisingly, the evening at Bonmy Beach didn't have bugs, it seemed, when I was there anyway. And the next movie night is planned for Killstife Community Center, October 24th, with I understand- Community Center, October 24th, with, I understand, inside with a Halloween theme. So that one should be quite exciting. Market Motor events at Cabo Beach have also been well-attended, and I've managed to make it to three of them so far. So I understand the last one for October has been canceled. That makes perfect sense. It's been good for the vendors. The last one I was at, I think, had almost 200 vehicles there. So it was quite surprising how many people are participating and taking part in that. And I think the vendors are doing well out there. And last Thursday, I had the opportunity to speak to two of the owners of the attack hockey team, as well as the general manager and their manager of marketing and communications. And they all spoke so highly of the facilities at Shawal Lake, and how normally in this situation where they have to look for a different facility, they are left moving further away than this. So they were so pleased with the, how well the facility worked for them. They had spaces for office. They used the upstairs for a training center. They could use the kitchen for meals for the team members, change rooms for the players, and they also commented on the superior quality of the ice. So thank you to staff who made sure that one happened as well. They put a lot of extra work into that. So the, and Haley for your work in organizing the media day. I got to speak to Carter George and David Bedkowski, and I was impressed with their professionalism and kindness in Young Gentlemen. It was a pleasure to meet them, and they really represent the attack hockey team very well. And along with Counselor Day and Haley again, I attended AMO in Ottawa, and I think I came back with more questions than answers this time, such as looking into the future, what new services will we need to provide? Transit recreation programming? Will we continue to take on further responsibilities from upper levels of government? And how will we fund everything? Have we factored growth into our asset management plan? What is the future cost of new assets, whether that be roads and new developments, wastewater, water, parks, facilities? What further amenities will be needed to support future growth, such as fire halls, police, transportation needs? I think some of those things are being missed in the housing targets that are being handed out, that there's an infrastructure demand that goes with getting those houses built faster, and they would get built faster if we had funding to get infrastructure in place ahead. What effect will all this growth have on our natural assets, and how do we protect those assets for future generations? And another item that I found really interesting to think about, when we enter into development agreements, if assets such as water and wastewater are allocated, can we write into those agreements an expiry date so that if a developer doesn't use their allocation within a specific time, that those assets can be reallocated to another developer instead of being held in limbo? And that might incentivize the developer to ensure they keep their development moving forward. So just something to think of there. And Counselor Day and I also attended a session on First Nations land use planning, where Miptone from Neoshinaming was one of the speakers. I found that one really informative and insightful. And in addition to the information about archaeology and planning, the following words resonated with me as something that I think I need to remember, maybe all of us do. And that's to always be mindful of the words I use. That one really kind of struck with me. And I have to say, it was an extremely busy conference, starting with the breakfast sessions in the morning and going through the whole day and into the evening. It made for a long four days, really. And we already spoke about the farm crawl, but I made it to all seven stops, and it was really a pleasure to get to talk to everybody. Grace Riding Academy appreciated being invited to participate because of the exposure it gives to their program, and they asked that I pass those thanks along to everyone here for helping to set that up. And that is, oh, other than, I noticed when I was on the tour, one of the flyers that was being handed out was about a greener homes tour that's coming up on September 21st. So I missed that one last year. I hope to make it out this year. That's it.
All right. Thank you. Lots of information there, too. Any other reports or comments from other boards and committees? Councilor Day?
I can speak a little to the Grace Level Conservation Authority. The 2025 to 2035 strategic plan has been approved. The education grant funding, just with such a success, I thought I would share, they exceeded their grant goals by 395%, increasing their budget significantly, and therefore the program they're able to offer as well. The English Falls Conservation Area upgrades are complete. So if you head out there, you'll see significant changes to the bathroom within our municipality, including good upgrades to make it accessible. Planning agreements with municipalities are delayed due to staffing constraints until early 2026, but they'll be on our agendas in the new year. The capola style, the roof has changed. Counselor Winter may wish to talk about it more. The, I find having, building committee to tour and make decisions and make recommendations to the broader Grace Level Committee is a useful set, a useful procedure. And as a result, we did follow the recommendation to not replace the skylights as they are, but to change the style of the roof to have a different capola style. And just one last comment, that the one staff member who managed IT has retired, and he will be replaced with a service provider with more access to more folks and more updated technology to ensure that security and privacy is maintained.
All right. So you have an update? Yes.
Thank you.
I could just quickly make note of the ROPP detachment board. We've had some communication with the Ontario Association of Police Service Force, and they really highlight the importance of building good relationships with the member municipalities. And they're strongly recommending presentations be done at council meetings so that we're getting input from our councils representing our township and making sure we see needs are being met. So I wonder if council might want to consider that at some point in the future.
All right. Thank you. Any other too? All right. If that's all we got, then we're on to unfinished business, which we have none. New business, we have none. Notice of motion or notice of discussion? Does any member wish to provide a notice of motion or notice of discussion for inclusion on our next council agenda? Mayor Corlin?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I have two notices of motion I'd like to bring forward. One, asking for a report on a drainage issue at Cabo Beach in the hollows. And the second one is a report on the status of the development known as Big Bay Estates. I think there's information there that needs to be shared with all of council, just to keep everybody updated on what's happening in those two developments.
Yep. Thank you. Yes.
Through you, Sheriff Pringle. I have three. I understand that we have entered into a corporate sponsorship model for 2025. This was brought to my attention, interestingly, by one of our local businesses. I was not aware that we are, that we are taking this kind of new approach. And I don't, I'm not suggesting that I have a problem with it, but I just wonder if we could hear more about what that entails, how the selection process was determined, and the amounts contributed for transparency. So that's corporate sponsorship. The second one, after the last conference, the province has announced more grant opportunities, and specifically infrastructure. I'm wondering when we might see a report so that council can have some input into what initiatives we ought to be applying for. So there is that. And I know there's always tight timelines for that kind of thing. And then finally, the third one around community events, and I'm glad that we got the update from the mayor. I think our community events have been quite well-received in the last couple of years. But what we don't have as council is a report that updates us on attendance, which events are worthwhile, continuing with which ones maybe aren't, but also the cost associated with these events, including staff time. I think I would like to request that information for our budget prep meetings, which will likely be happening before too long. And I would like to see community events as a separate budget item so that we can consider that as our, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Any further? All right. Not seen anymore. We've got a closed session, which we do not have. We're none. So adjournment. The date of our next regular reading, council is holding a special county meeting at 7:00, immediately following this meeting. And the recommendation reads that the whole meeting adjourned at 6:19. Need to move for a second here. Councilor Corbin? Councilor Day? Any discussion? Call is in favor. That is carried. You're out, Jim.